The independent chair of the inquiry into the Sheffield Street Tree dispute. Thanks for joining us. Could I ask you please to tell us your name and your role?
Yeah, my name's councillor Brian Lodge. I'm the co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee at Sheffield City Council.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming today. I really appreciate it. Just a couple of process points that I run through with everybody. Firstly, we are live streaming this and it's being recorded and it'll be uploaded after the hearing, just to make sure you're aware of that. I'm happy with that. And then secondly, we're not allowed in these sessions to have anything said which is libelous or defamatory or that brings into the public domain personal information about somebody which should be protected by data protection legislation. I'm absolutely not expecting us to run into that problem, but I want just to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, sure.
Perfect. So, as with everybody, I've sent you a list of topics we're keen to ask you about, and in a minute we'll start working our way through those topics. But is there anything you'd like to say by way of introduction?
Yeah, I think it should be recognised, the investment that was going on there. Sheffield had historically under-invested in the highways, in the highway network and the infrastructure out there, and it had achieved this tag of pothole city. So, when the government of the time sought expressions of interest for looking at highways, PFI, Sheffield, we were there at the forefront. It was one of the first things that I did when I became a cabinet member in fronting the expression of interest in going through there. We'd already been successful for the streetlight PFI before it was all agreed around the highways, PFI, but it was part of a project that was to improve the street scene and the infrastructure across the whole of the city. One element of this was the street trees that became the hot topic of everything out there, but I don't think it should be forgotten about the bigger picture, what this was all about and the whole package, the holistic approach that was done to improve the street scene across Sheffield.
Thank you very much. I do think that's an important point, so thank you for flagging it to us. So, the first thing I wanted just to ask you to explain, and for reasons you've just sort of started on actually, is if you could just remind us of the positions you've held in the council since 2005 and the responsibilities you had at different times for the Streets Head contract and therefore having the dispute.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I was elected onto the council in 2002, and in 2005, I was a cabinet assistant for Environment, and that was within the Transport and Environment portfolio. In 2006, I became the cabinet member of Street Scene and Green Spaces, and that's when we submitted the expression of interest to the government for part of this Pathfinder process. So, it was quite interesting from that point in becoming the cabinet member to then be involved in looking forward, looking at this and looking at proposals and submitting the case to the government, the expression of interest. I continued in that role until 2008. I also took on the transport side of the portfolio when a colleague stepped down, and so I assumed that as well in there. From May 2008 to 2011, we were in opposition, I was a shadow cabinet member again for the Transport and Street Scene, which again had the oversight of where we were with the whole streets ahead and, well, the whole street scene out there. In May 2011, with the change of administration again, I became the cabinet member for Finance and Resources until September 2012, I think it was September. During that period of time, it was when the formal signing off of the tenders had to be approved and go through. So, I was the cabinet member for Finance with the cabinet member with responsibility for it at the time, it was councillor Lee Bramall, and with John Mother sold the chief executive, we listened to the officers, the submission and explaining through, and then we agreed that it was appropriate that we accepted Amy's tender and assigned the contract to Amy in there. From September 12 to May 2016, I think it was, yeah, I wasn't involved in there, I was a backbencher, involved in other things, on scrutiny boards and things. In May 2016 to May 2018, I became the cabinet member for Environment, which had oversight of, amongst other things, the Streets Ahead programme, which had then been mobilised and brought through. So, from then, from 2018 to 2019, again, I was a backbencher, and then in September 2019, sorry, 2019, through to, it would be to May 21, I was the cabinet adviser to councillor Terry Fox, it was the Finance and Resources brief, and then from May 21 to May 22, I was the cabinet adviser to the leader in his role there. And then from May this year, I became co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee. So, I've had sort of an involvement from it, from the original concept, if you like, when we put things through, to then we were in opposition for a while while it was formalised and going through, and then I was there for the formal acceptance, if you like, of Amy as the contractor and for the later stages from year four onwards of the mobilisation of the project.
Great. So, I mean, as all that implies, you actually have an unusually good overview.
Yeah, I've sort of, I've maintained an interest in it, I think, probably because of that involvement from different stages going through.
Yeah, I mean, for my body, that makes you a very helpful person to talk to. So, bearing in mind all that, I wanted to ask you sort of why, in summary, if you don't mind, you think the dispute arose, what the concerns of the council were, and also why the dispute took as long as it did to resolve?
This is a tricky one. The first three years of the project had gone ahead without any issues, and work had gone on to replace street trees in different parts of the city, and the project was going through. However, during that period, towards the end of that period, there was a proposal that came through to remove a number of trees for a highway improvement scheme in the Healy area, around Healy City Farm, I think it was for a bus lane that was looking through. And that was a, it was probably ill-conceived, shall we say, and I think this was, this sort of brought people, brought it to people's attention, and then they became aware of the wider issue of street trees and things in there. The project has always been to, the programme as part of this, has always been to replace the highways, street trees, and actually plant more than when we started at this. We had an aging profile of trees in there, as part of the audit of all the infrastructure and things in there, the trees were identified, the aging profile, it wasn't of a mixed sort of profile of the trees, and a number of them were inappropriate. So, all part of this was to improve the highway, the infrastructure, and use this as an opportunity to provide a more stable street tree stock going forward and increase the number of trees that were out there along the highway. The core investment programme was designed to look at all these things and look at highways and different roads going through and deliver on there, and we had an infographic that showed what it would mean, where it covered things such as pavements, verges, trees, highways, street lighting, street signs, street furniture, everything, and it was a sort of curb-to-kerb approach. So, the infographic showed you what was involved in there. And so, this, as I say, this had gone on for three years, and it was rolling out without any big upheaval, without any big protests, and with general support from the public for things that were going on. It then came around because the focus on the trees after the proposal on the bus lane in the Healy City Farm area, and it seemed to grow from there, really. I think one of the, one of the issues, why did it take so long to resolve? We were in a situation where the advice we were being given was that the contract, the Amy were responsible for doing the highways and going through, and it was their responsibility to deliver on the highways. We were sort of stuck between the getting them to fulfil their responsibilities and the issues that are going on with people that were trying to stop it. It became very focused in a small area geographically of the city, on a relatively small number of streets, and a relatively small number of people, again, across the whole population of the city. We'd had local elections, the democratic mandate, if you like, because Labour had been returned, was to deliver that contract and go through with the contract, and it was one of the policies that we stood on, and that was one of the things we looked to do. It was one of the things that we, we take on the responsibilities as councillors in the general term because we're wanting to improve things for the whole city. Yes, we are elected by our voters in our constituencies, our wards, but when you are taking on a role as a cabinet member or as part of the executive or things like that, you are also dealing with whole-city aspects, and this was a project for the whole of the city. As I say, for many, many years, we'd had this tag that said we were pothole city. As part of the process in going for the highways, PFI as it was known then, in looking at all the figures that were submitted from other towns and cities, Sheffield was no worse or no better than other towns and cities if you scaled up and down the cost per mile or kilometre for the works that were involved. So, what we were bidding for was proportionate with other towns and cities in there, but a very vocal campaign had been delivered over a number of years in the media about pothole city, and a very vocal campaign was delivered on this occasion around the trees. You know, it was a very, very good campaign, there's no doubt about it, and people were very passionate, and sometimes that passionate involvement spilled over a little bit, but ultimately, it was one of these things that we were with the contract and the requirements for Amy. I think what led to a change was Amy was seeing the costs that they were incurring racking up, and it wasn't sustainable to continue in that way. And so, I suppose in some respects, you could look at it and say that, you know, the protest actually brought Amy back to the table to agree to make some changes that were outside of the contracts, because we'd been very clear that we had no additional funding to put in to bring around engineering solutions which were not included within the contract. So, it was a very difficult time, and it was very difficult in trying to explain some of these nuances about, around what was intended and the works that were intended in there.
Okay. So, you mentioned the issues around Healy City Farm, but I wonder if you could just tell us when you first became aware of opposition to the street tree aspects of the Streets Ahead programme?
I think this was probably the time, as part of the process, we'd gone through the first three years and we're going through the rollout of the scheme, and it was always planned that there were, I can't remember what they called them, what they called them, tree walks or within the area, to go and talk to interested parties, the community that were out there, talk to them, so there'd be people from Amy there, there'd be the cabinet member and the cabinet member's assistant would go along with officers of the council as well as from Amy and look at things, and where there were issues with some of the trees, then they would look at those. I think it's also worth pointing out here that no trees, that the decision on whether any tree was to be replaced was taken by the council. There was a misconception out there that Amy were taking these things off their own back. Well, it was a council decision, they needed the authority approval to do anything in there, and that was written into the terms of the contract. But when they were doing some of these tree walks, I think they were called tree walks, it was getting where there was inappropriate behaviour that was demonstrated towards officers of the council, towards officers of Amy, and it was becoming a situation where they weren't achieving what they intended to do in consultation, it was becoming a little bit unruly and uncoordinated. So, I think that was the first sort of indication that, in a few areas, but it became apparent from some of these, some of these tree walks that there weren't always people that lived in that immediate neighbourhood that were coming and getting involved. So, while they were designed to discuss and listen to the concerns of the community and to help in looking at things, it became, it became clear that there were people from a wider, from further afield that were coming along to these, and at that point there, it was, it was decided then to look at the setting up a tree panel, an independent tree panel chaired by the cabinet member at the time and with people from different backgrounds, from highways, from ecology and those sort of things, to come and look at some of the proposals for individual streets.
Okay. So, you became the cabinet member responsible, as you told us earlier, in May 2016, and I wonder what your impressions were at that time, including the ongoing initiatives to deal with the dispute, which did include at that time the independent tree panel?
Yeah. It was, it was interesting. As I say, I'd sort of, I'd maintained an interest in it while I was no longer dealing with that sort of as a responsibility. It was clearly a very, very difficult situation, and my view is, my view when I came in was that the council, we weren't managing to explain the full benefits and the full scale of what we were proposing, and, you know, the long-term outcomes that we were aiming to achieve, the improvements that were out there, looking at re-profiling the age and the types of trees that were out there, and deliver something that was better for the highways, the footways, the infrastructure, for the benefit of everyone across the city, you know, regardless of where it was, it was looking to improve the highways, infrastructure that was out there. As I say, we'd suffered from a lot of bad press around that in the, in the years in pothole city, and it seemed to me that we weren't really getting the message across in the media, and we weren't getting our position across in explaining this. So, one of the things I did look at, and I thought it was a, it was an awareness sort of campaign, so I undertook from very early on that I would be open to conversations and briefings with broadcast and print media. I didn't underestimate the task that faced us. It was a very, very good campaign that was coordinated, but we didn't seem to be getting our positive message across, and a lot of the time we seemed to be on the back foot. So, one of the things that I tried to do was redress that balance in putting the council's position forward and trying to explain things. The campaign against the works had already gathered momentum, and it was almost like trying to stop an oil tanker in that respect there. The independent tree panel, I thought it was a good idea and a process to bring things through, to review and discuss things and look at things in an open, an open way. The first, the first tree panel was held in the reception rooms of the town hall, and I went in just to observe, and it became clear I was standing at the back of the room in that meeting, I was just there, I wasn't there in any official capacity, but it became clear looking round that there was quite a coordinated approach from members of the public that were there to listen to things, because there were people that were going around and distributing questions and saying, right, this is your question, you're asking this as question number five, and then further around the room, this is question number six. And so, you know, from that first independent tree panel, it looked to be quite coordinated.
Can I just check on one thing there?
Yeah.
Is what you're describing there a meeting of the Highway Trees Advisory Forum?
Sorry, it was the, sorry, it was the tree forum, the tree forum, apologies.
It was the Highway Trees Advisory Forum, you're describing, it wasn't the ITP.
There's that many things, it's moved on. So, yeah, you know, that was looking at the things there.
And that was before you were the cabinet member, that was in 2015.
It was, yes, yeah, yeah. So, when I took over, the independent tree panel was looking at things. That was again looking at things and making an assessment, individual trees and looking through there. I can't remember the exact figures, but I think on recommendations from the independent tree panel, they agreed with more than 50%, and I think it might have been up to about 70% of the recommendations that came through from the tree panel, sorry, that went to the tree panel, agreed with the recommendations for replacing on trees. There were a lot of misconceptions that were out there about the number of trees that were being involved and the reasons for dilemmaing some of these, but the agreement of the independent tree panel got lost in the noise of the wider conversations and everything else that was going on around the issue.
Okay. So, just to check, I've understood you on a couple of points. I think, I think what I've heard you say is you thought when you became the cabinet member that the problem you had was a communication problem, not a substantive problem of people understanding what was going on and just not liking it? You thought it was a communication problem?
I think, I think there was, there was an element of that in there as well, clearly, that people in certain areas did not like what was, what was being proposed. We had a bigger issue in getting the, explaining the full benefits to everybody out there, and, you know, if you look now, hindsight's a wonderful science, and to be, you look now and you can look at some of the, some of the street scenes that are out there now, the trees are established and in there, and they're looking quite well-established, some of these trees, and people are generally happy that they're seeing the street scene improved, you know, the highways condition, the footpaths and everything like that as well. It's very easy when you're looking, looking back at it, but at the time, people were very focused on what they saw was steps to just, just fell trees within the league. Well, there were criteria that were looked at, and not everybody agreed with those criteria that were put forward.
Okay.
And it came again, it became a bit, one of these things where it was embroiled in understanding what the different, it was trying to be simplified when they came up with the Ds, the six Ds.
Right, right.
But then that became confusing, and people were sort of not understanding what it meant and things like that as well. And it's very, very difficult when you are faced with that sort of situation, you're almost in a hiding to nothing to then try and get that message across. I saw that as one of the issues that we needed to get a better, a better understanding, a better explanation to people, better communications of what the overall long-term benefits of the programme were.
So, I just wanted also to follow up on the point you made about the independent tree panel. Are you, were you aware that in the cases where the authority agreed with the ITP, they were largely cases where the panel had recommended replacing the tree?
Yeah.
You were aware of that?
Yeah.
So, okay.
There were cases where, there were cases where the ITP didn't agree, and there were suggestions of things that were outside of the solutions within the contract, and we'd been quite clear in some of those that we, we didn't have the additional funding to put in to deliver these things that were outside of the terms of the contract. It was quite a, it was quite a big ask for the council in the expenditure, and, you know, things have not gotten easier since, but we were quite clear in then that Amy were contracted to deliver this scheme, these were the things that they were including within the contract, the independent tree panel were making recommendations that were outside of the available engineering solutions, and that's why sometimes there was a disagreement over the final, the final decision.
I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but the evidence I've had from the independent tree panel, that Mr Buck, who is the chair, was that they believed that what they were recommending was what they had been told would be possible under the contract. Were you aware of that?
I wasn't aware of that.
You weren't aware of that?
I wasn't aware of that.
Now, I wanted to ask you a few questions to make sure we can understand how decisions were made, basically. So, I wonder if you, just to start, so I can make it understand, if you could help me understand the division of responsibility between elected councillors and officers in the delivery of the Streets Ahead programme?
Put very simply, councillors set the policy, the officers deliver the policy. You know, we had the Streets Head Programme, as it was then called initially, it was the highways, PFI, but it became the Streets Head Programme, and this was something to benefit the whole of the city, and it went through. If you look at local elections that helped determine the policy of the administration, the administration that sets the policy, in May 2016 elections, there were 84 seats on the council, Labour held 59 seats, the Liberal Democrats had 17, the Greens and UKIP had four seats between them, and that was in May 2019, in May 2016. Of the 28 seats contested that year, Labour won 19 seats, so you could say that across the whole city, the majority of people went out and voted, voted for the Labour candidates, and one of our policies was the Streets Ahead Programme. In 2019, two and a half years after the incident that sort of brought things to a head in Rusling's Road, there were still 49 Labour seats, 26 Lib Dem seats, eight Greens and one UKIP, and if you look where, for example, the Greens had increased their number of seats, you could see it geographically in small areas where they were gaining, where they got three seats or two seats and gaining seats, in the, in three or four small areas of the city where the campaign was most vociferous in going through. Other parts of the city were returning Labour councillors year in, year out, so, you know, over those previous years. So, in looking at where the policy came from and the delivery of the policy, that was clear from our manifesto commitments that was going in there, that this is what we were going to do, and the majority of people who voted in those elections through those years backed that proposal and supported the Labour candidates.
So, in the period when you were the cabinet member, I wonder if you could just explain to us in a bit more detail how you took decisions and what factors and constraints you considered when you were deciding how to deal with the dispute?
How do we take decisions? As a councillor, I'm a lay member, if you like, I'm not a professional in things there, so I rely on professional advice from highways officers, from legal officers, you know, all the, all the tree specialists, arboriculturists, is it, you know, forgive me if I trip over your tongue on that one. I require, I require the advice from them to help us and look and decide on the decisions we make. We get feedback from residents, feedback, as I say, through local elections, there is feedback that comes from campaigners, campaigners who wanted more work done on trees, who wanted work on trees in their, in their streets, and campaigners who were against the sort of, the role that was taken there. The independent tree panel were assessed, were asked to assess and look at some of these things in there, and they came up with their advice, and then, you know, bringing all this together, you look at it and you're ultimately, as I said before, you're ultimately charged with delivering for the best for the whole of the city, and we don't always make decisions that are popular with every single person, but we have to make decisions which are, on balance, considered the right things to do for the benefit and for the development and for the, you know, the welfare of the whole of the city. And there are times when it gets where people don't agree with that, and the very passionate arguments are expressed against that. It's one of those things that you have to weigh up and balance it as a politician. It's not always easy, it's not always comfortable, but, you know, you would, and, you know, I've said this many, many times in the council chamber and in meetings and things like that as well, there are 84 councillors on Sheffield City Council, and none of us come on wanting to do a bad job and do something to the detriment of the city. We all want to enhance and improve the city, we may have slightly different views about delivery of some of the things in there, but it is the, it's the stated aim, I suppose, of all the councillors, to improve the city for the, for the benefit of the whole, you know, population out there and visitors.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So, I wanted to ask you next about your discussions with the leader of the council on the dispute, in particular to help us understand the kind of issues you discussed with her as opposed to those where political direction was provided, you provided it to officers yourself without seeking the views of the leader. officers yourself without seeking the views of the leader.
I, I think it's, to, to understand that, any decisions around the implementation of the policy are, are taken through the Labour Group. We have a collective responsibility.
Right.
Policy, so if there are issues that are coming through, they are taken to the Labour Group, which is the Labour councillors on, on the city council. We will discuss them, we, we may have presentations from officers that bring technically professional views, we will have discussions and debates, we'll take questions, we'll have debates, and at the end of it, you know, there is a vote taken, and those are, that's, that's the format that we, as the Labour Group, do to decide on, on policy and the implementation of policy. There would have been, there would have been informal conversations with, with the leader of the council, but nothing in, in sort of setting out as a, a, a direct policy, because it was, it's incumbent on us to, to discuss it with our colleagues in the group and, and get that collective feeling for it, because, as I say, we have collective responsibility, and colleagues would be out there, there may be disagreements, and there may be differences of opinion within the Labour Group on some aspects or, or, or different things at different times, but we, we accept collective responsibility at the end of it.
Yes.
And so it was important that we had Labour Group involved in, in, in looking at the, the, the decisions and the implementation of the policy.
Yes. So could you please give us some examples of the kinds of issues that you had those informal discussions with the leader on?
It may have been sort of, I mean, forgive me, if, if they're informal, it's there, it's maybe just updating where we are on particular issues, or, you know, where the, the, there'd be things where we were getting reports of how many trees had been replaced in a particular week, there may have been reports about where we'd had reports back through from where there'd been issues with AMI workers and contractors stopped from doing work and things like that, but nothing, nothing in the substantial policy-wise was sort of taken, Julia and myself, it was all done through the formal Labour Group process.
Yeah.
There may be minor sort of operational, but, but, you know, I suppose looking and saying, oh, there's these sort of trees, these, these streets, these streets, this street, do we do it now, do we do it then, looking on there, you know, well, this is what we're looking at here, so on timetabling issues and things like that, but nothing substantial that, that, that would be, that would be a change to the policy that was agreed or, or a change to the decision of the group that was in there.
But things like...
No better than doing that, because you face the, you face the wrath if you do that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, but things like, should we move over this street now or should we actually pause? You're saying that was an example of something you need to discuss?
There were generally, there were generally sort of, a timetable would be agreed in advance and we'd have discussed it with, with the group, but then there may have been issues that arise that it just meant it wasn't technically possible, it might not be, things that may have overrun, and it may have been, say, well, it might be, well, this has been delayed this week, that sort of minor operational things, but nothing to dictate what was done substantially when and where, that was always sort of discussed with the group.
Okay. All right, the, you mentioned the issues on Rusling's Road earlier, so I wanted to ask you if you could tell us about how the plan for the removal of the trees on Rusling's Road was developed, the factors influencing the planning of what happened in November twenty sixteen, any reflections you have on how that plan was implemented and received, and, and all the while I'm recognising that while, according to evidence that we've received, you approved the overall approach, you may well not have been involved in the operational detail.
Yeah, I think, and, and forgive me, I, I, I was trying to think back, there'd been a number of attempts to do some work on Rusling's Road.
Yeah.
It was part of the programme of works that go in there, and in doing these things, it, it was, it was sequential, so you weren't going to go and do things like the highway if you were then going to be damaging it by removing trees and replacing trees, you weren't going to do things with street lighting if you were then going to, so it's a sequential approach that they went through. There'd been several attempts during the, the, the normal sort of hours of work for, for AMI operatives to try and deal with the trees in there. We were also looking to replace trees that had been lost over previous years, so I think overall, I can't remember, but I think it was, it was six or seven trees that the planned replacement, so removal and replacement, and then additional trees to be planted on there to replace those that had died back or, or through disease or had been lost through storm and things like that. So there'd been, there'd been attempts made many occasions, and they'd, they'd been stopped for, for a number of reasons, the, the teams were being followed out of Olive Grove, there were sort of informal methods of, of people communicating to try and stop work and getting in the way of things, so it was, it was important in, in the aspects of the contract that, that work was allowed to proceed and go through. AMI were contracted to deliver that, if they didn't, if they were stopped from delivering that, then it could have had implications for them on, on release payments, et cetera, going through. So discussions were held where they were looking at how, how this could be achieved, what were the means to deal with this with all parties involved. I wasn't involved in the operational planning of that. Yes, I would say that in, in the, the overall, the overall acceptance of the need to deliver the works on Rusling's Road, but regarding the operational issues of that, not involved in it, my first, my first knowledge of what had gone on on Rusling's Road was when the alarm clock went off, the radio came on, and it was Radio Sheffield News that was, that was reporting on what happened there. I then turned on my mobile phone, and I found I got a number of missed calls from, from a number of journalists at BBC Sheffield that were trying to get in touch with me and talk to me. I had no knowledge of what was planned on that day to do the work on that, on that street. Reflections on, on how it was implemented after? It would be stupid to say it could have been handled better, because that was clearly the position that arose from there. It was very difficult, I think the police were involved because there was considered to be a, 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 a public order issue, potential public order or potential danger to protesters getting in the way of, you know, some of these trees are, are quite heavy and things in there, so it was protecting the, the protesters and the, the workforce and everybody down there, and that was, the, the, the police were involved in that respect. The, the press, the press reports sort of implied that we'd gone to fell every single tree on Rusling's Road, and if you were to read the reports that were out there in the press, that would be the perception of a, you know, anybody picking up a paper or listening on the radio was that the council had gone out there to just, you know, bare earth policy, scorched earth policy, take all the trees down. That wasn't the case at all. It was, it was, I think it was six or seven trees, I can't remember the number, but there were more trees that were planned to replace, I think if it was, if it was six or seven, I think there was seven or eight other trees, so we were looking to double the number of trees that were being replanted on there. To restore the, to restore the street scene from when the trees had been planted many, many years previously, and, you know, at, at that time, it, it was very difficult in the days, in the days after and weeks after, pictures started appearing of when the trees were planted initially and the look on there, there was a, we had officials that came up from the government, I think there were, I think it was Michael Gove, who was the, the Cabinet Minister, his officials came up and they were taken in a, a car, and they said, well, we'll take you to this road, because they'd asked about Rusling's Road, so they took them, they said, oh, we're going down here, and they're driving down and looking, so this is a lovely location, and then it was, well, this is where the issues arose where they took out the, the, the trees. So it was, it was a very difficult time in things in there, I don't think, there were all sorts of things bandied around in the press as if, as if making out that I'd fronted some campaign to get people arrested, which was absolute nonsense, and when asked about it, I said we didn't want to see anybody put themselves in, in Hallsbury, didn't want to see anybody put themselves outside of, of, of the law and where the police intervened and things like that. There is a, you know, rightful peaceful protest is, is, is something that's there, and, you know, that's not a problem, but it was never, it was not something I was aware of, the, the proposals, it was only afterwards that I was made, made aware of what had actually gone on when, you know, when I, I woke up, I made a few calls and then tried to find out, and then spoke to officers to find out what had gone on.
Okay, okay. Now, the next topic I want to discuss with you is, you know, acknowledging that opposition to the tree replacement programme was sustained over a number of years, and the campaigners' activities included, among other things, you know, petitions with large numbers of signatures, protests on various streets, lots of questions and other representations to the council, so I'm, I'm interested to understand how you tried to judge the strength of feeling on street tree issues, what, what evidence you used to judge the balance of opinion in the city around the dispute, and, and whether there are any key points really at which you felt that wider public opinion changed in one direction or, or another?
Yeah, petitions, questions, there were, the, the council constitution allows for questions at, at meetings, full council meetings, cabinet meetings and committee meetings, and the various scrutiny boards and things like that. We had a large number of questions that were asked by a handful of people. So during this period, you could look, if you're sitting in the full council and they sit on the bench, you look up, you could see four, five people, regular attendees, and you had the questions that they were going to ask, because they have to submit the question beforehand, and so yes, we had a large number of questions, but not submitted by a large number of people, if that makes sense. There were petitions that were presented with many signatures on them, and, you know, I suppose I've been guilty as well of, I've signed, I've signed petitions on things and not really fully understood what, you know, someone's picked something at me and go, yeah, okay, I'll agree with that, and you sign a petition. You would look at the, the addresses of people who'd signed the petitions, and there would be quite a small geographical area of the city, we had petitions that were received asking for additional work to be done on trees in other parts of the city, gauging public opinion, again, I'll go back to the ballot box, the local elections, over three years, it was only in, it was in, I think it was May twenty nineteen that the Labour councillors on the, on the authority dropped to forty-nine. Prior to that, through, through the period where all this were, where all this was going on, we were returning Labour councillors. I'd go out for a drink with friends and with family, and people would come and approach you and tell you about things, I had letters that were coming in from people that were, that were supporting action. There were members of the public in areas such as Burngreeve, not, yeah, yeah, Burngreeve, Furvale area, and in Darnall, on the Triangle Estate in particular, I remember that one, where members of the public were coming out to, to stop the protesters stopping the AMI teams from doing the work that they wanted. I was contacted by someone who'd been at school with an older brother that recognised the name, he says, you must know me, your brother knew me from this, and contacted me about things that are down there in Furvale, and I spoke to a number of people all over the city, there were people that were complaining that work wasn't being done when they wanted it done, they were complaining, complaining that we wouldn't do work, but he was trying to explain and say it was outside of the, the, the six Ds that we had, the categorising of, of things, so there was, there was no shortage of feedback from members of the public, but again, you know, I, I look at that and I say, for, over the, over a number of years, in the local elections, it was quite clear that that was the Labour Party position to deliver the Streets Ahead project, and the, the vast majority of people who were going out and voting were returning votes for Labour councillors. I think it was, it was usually, it was hitting forty, forty-two, forty-five percent of votes cast were cast in favour of Labour councillors.
Hmm.
Now, forgive me, I don't know the exact figure, but, but across those periods, so, you know, across the wider city, that's a fair indication of, of the support across the city. We had hundreds of FOIs that were coming in, many that, when they didn't agree with the response, they submit another FOI, so it was tying up members of the team that were, that were dealing with things there. We had many sort of letters and correspondence and emails that came in, in that respect, that we'd send on to the team to respond to, there were, there were teams that were there to, to deal with the correspondence around those sort of things. The, the, it was a disproportionate number of contacts that were coming in from a smaller percent, a small chunk of the population, if you like, so a geographical area was generating huge amounts and a disproportionate percentage of those who were coming from this small geographic area where a, a smaller percentage of the population.
Okay. One of the other things that, that some people refer to in, in, in respect of this kind of set of issues that we're discussing is the evolution of, I think it's called the Save Our City campaign.
It's Our City. It's Our City.
It's Our City, thank you, which people have told us came out of people who were concerned initially about the street trees, and of course, that led to the referendum and decision taken on that. What's your own view on the extent to which the voice of the city, as expressed through that referendum and the new model you now have for governing the city, had as its origin some of the things that happened during the Street Tree Dispute?
It was clear that, that it came and it developed from, from things around the streets, the, the street, the street tree protests, as members of that camp, that campaign were also members of the, the, the street tree campaigns. It's, it's, it's very hard to dispute a negative in, in those sort of things in there, and I think there was also, there, there wasn't a unilateral opinion across councillors from all groups, so some were supportive of committee system, some were not supportive of a committee system, some people had experience of a committee system before, many did, had no experience of a committee system. Is it the right system? I can see that there are the, the aims, I understand the aims of it, to get more councillors involved in, in things, I think that's not necessarily proving to be the case, if you talk to many councillors from all parties, it, it seems to be a bit of a, I don't think it's working the way any of us hoped it would be working, and we have a governance review of, of this that, that's, that's taking place now, we said we, we review it after six months in looking at, at the way some of the decisions that arrived, we had an issue, there's a charity trustee subcommittee that met yesterday regarding an issue in one of the parks that's had the councillors, the corporate trustee, and it's taken a while, one of the members of the public who came along, they explained, expressed his concerns that he'd gone to so many different committees to get to this point, and, and it's, it's the, it's where things fall between these different committees, and things is very difficult, and it's still a new system that we're all working to adapt to. And it's still a new system that we're all working to adapt to. Yeah, I'd say that clearly came out, the campaign, It's Our City, developed on the back of that.
Okay.
You know, I can understand where that came from.
Okay, thank you very much, that's very helpful. Now, the next thing I wanted just to ask your perspective on really, and to tell us your role in decision-making, was basically the decision to pursue legal remedies to the dispute, including, you know, seeking the injunction and then, after a time actually, we knew the injunction was sought, and then enforcement actions on the injunction. What can you tell us about that?
Obviously, there were disgusts. All options were looked at. There were still problems with work that was being stopped and AMI were not being allowed to progress with the works out there. And so, options were put out there, but ultimately, you know, there'll be different views and opinions put forward. Ultimately, the decision to pursue legal remedies is not taken by me or as a councillor. It's taken, you know, the professional advice at looking at and weighing up the merits of the case and whether it is likely to proceed. All interested parties, you know, AMI, the council, et cetera, were all involved. But yes, we were made aware of the decisions and the, to look and pursue these. But the decision is that of the Director of Legal Services. Now, yes, there'd be discussions and seeking opinions. But the decision is not one that was taken by me or by fellow elected members.
So one of my questions is, what you thought would be the result of taking out the injunctions? Was the expectation that it would lead to an end to the dispute? And on what basis, if that was the expectation, on what basis was that judgment made?
It was hoped that people would adhere to an injunction that would not broach the exclusion zones which are set up to protect the workforce and members of the public protesters and allow the work to be conducted safely in those areas. That was the intention of it.
That was the hope and the intention.
Yeah.
What discussions do you remember about, you know, people asking and getting responses to the question, well, is this actually going to work?
My recollection at the time is that that was considered to be the best way forward to enable the work to continue and protect the safety of the workforce and the protesters. There were people that were putting themselves at risk and it was considered that that was the best way forward to try and bring it home to people. You know, this work was programmed to go through and we hoped that people would adhere to it and accept that that was the case.
That was the hope, okay. Now, there was then later, as you know, a decision to introduce security guards into safety zones and so on once it became clear that not everyone was deterred by the injunctions or the committal proceedings. So there was introduction of security guards, authorising them to use reasonable force and so on. And I wonder if you could give us your sort of take on that decision and on the impact it had on the dispute?
That was a commercial decision of AMI. They were responsible for the operational aspects of the contract. They were facing disruption to their work, they were out to protect their workforce, they were out to protect protesters that were in there. That's a decision that they took to allow them to fulfil their responsibilities.
And what recollection do you have of discussions you and the leader had with AMI on those issues?
I think we, you know, obviously we'd have had discussions around it, but again, it would have been something, if it was, if AMI had come and proposed that, then it would have been, it's their decision because they're the ones who were doing that, it was at their cost that we're doing that there. Our view was that they had a contract to fulfil and this was them trying to deliver on their responsibilities. There would have been discussions and again, you know, Labour Group members would have been advised that if we were advised that's what they were going to do, we would advise the Labour Group that that's what they were going to do. But again, it wasn't our decision, it's not something that we we had to agree and say yes or no to because it was an operational decision for AMI. AMI were facing increased costs and things as a result of that, that was their commercial decision.
Would you agree that had you wanted and not to do that, you would have been able to say that to them?
It's very difficult to say and, you know, sitting here now and looking at it and you're looking with hindsight, you clearly look and see things differently. At the time, AMI considered that was an appropriate approach for them to take, to enable them to fulfil their obligations.
Okay. Now, I wanted to ask you if you could give us your understanding of the reference to seventeen thousand five hundred trees being replaced, the reference in the contract to that. I'm interested to know what information you were given on that and indeed other elements of the contract, when you were the responsible cabinet member?
The initial expressions of interest were put out there, it was the government, at the time it was the Labour Government. We had had acceptance and we needed to put the business case together. There was a general election and a change in the government and the coalition government came in. As part of the coalition government, they asked that the submissions be looked at again to make some savings. We were in Sheffield City Council, the Labour Group was in opposition. So it was the Liberal Democrats that were in the position there where they were looking at refining the contract or they were the oversight of the submission that was going in there. My first sort of understanding around this figure was when I became the cabinet member. And then it all blew up to say, this is a target that's in there. My understanding of that then and is now, this was a figure that was put in as a sort of insurance policy, this is a twenty-five year contract. If trees are to be replaced, there is a cost to those. This figure was put in that enabled the council to look and say, okay, based on the current profile of the types of the trees out there and the age and also, I think, and I can't remember, we used to lose, we used to lose a number of trees each year through storm damage and things like that. If you calculate all that through, they arrived at a figure. The seventeen and a half thousand figure in there was to say, right, if we replace up to seventeen and a half thousand trees, there is no cost to the council. If there had been something like ash dieback, if there'd been, you know, Dutch elm disease that had impacts, and I'm not saying it's just on the...
No, no, I understand.
But if there had been something like that, that had a catastrophic effect, it could have had a huge impact on the council's finances. So that figure was in there to cover and to say, up to that amount is included within the contract. Now, it was unfortunate that this was misinterpreted and came across as saying, AMI are going to cut seventeen and a half thousand trees down. That's not been the case at all. It was not a requirement. AMI could not cut down any trees without the authority approval. Any decisions on trees to be taken down was taken by the city council and not by AMI. So it was unfortunate that this figure was in there. I understand from a conversation with yourself that had been revised back by the council to a smaller figure, but AMI decided to keep that in there. And in some respects, that was them trying to make their bid look more attractive because it allowed greater protection for the council than against an eight thousand something figure that had been suggested as part of the scaling back of the costs that was asked for by the coalition government.
Okay. So, the next thing I wanted to ask you about comes towards the end of your period actually as the cabinet member. And that relates to the circumstances leading to the pause in basically back end of March 2018, which ultimately was the moment at which that phase of the tree replacement programme was brought to an end and then the council evolved its approach. So could you tell us what you remember about what had gone on in the run-up to that pause? And how the discussion, how the decision to have the late March pause was taken by them?
Yeah, I think it was quite clear that AMI's attempts to deliver on their aspects of the contract, where they brought in additional fencing and set up exclusion zones, where they brought in the security guards, where the injunction had not worked, but it was, this was increasing costs, it was having a negative, excuse me, negative press coverage for Sheffield. It was damaging to the city, it was damaging to AMI and reputational damage out there. And so, it was at that point that I think AMI, and forgive me, I can't remember the details, but I think it was that at that point, AMI approached and said, look, we need to do something differently here. And that's where the decision was taken. If we had told AMI to stop, we'd have stopped them from being able to fulfil their contractual obligations, which could have had implications to the council. If AMI had not sought the council's approval, they wouldn't have been fulfilling their contractual obligations which made that impact. So it needed that sort of grown-up, adult conversation. And so, the decision was taken at the time, saying, look, we need to pause this. Let's have a look, let's see and see if there's a different way to do this.
Okay. And what do you remember of the advice given by the police around that time? And the position of the police?
I think the advice that was coming from the police was that it wasn't sustainable for them to keep turning out onto those sort of issues. So they had concerns around public order issues. I know the Police and Crime Commissioner expressed his view that the council, AMI and the protesters needed to get together and sit down and talk because it was not sustainable going forward for anybody for that sort of thing in there. And on the basis of those sort of views that were coming through, from the view from AMI, that it was unsustainable for them to keep doing it there and bringing in the security and still not achieving what they intended to achieve, then we needed to pause and have a look and see if there was a different way and a different approach.
Dr Billings told me that he made those points and indeed he's on the record publicly as having said those things. Other people are on the public record as having said similar things, some of the local MPs, for example. I also wanted to ask if you recall your conversations in early 2018 on the same topic really with Sue Hayman, who at that time was the Shadow Cabinet Member for Environment. And I understand you and she had some discussions.
Yeah, forgive me, it blurs into the background now, I think. There were conversations that were going out there, I know we had conversations with a number of people. We had Michael Gove that visited here, he came up to Sheffield and we had conversations with him. And he agreed to, you know, he'd consider what we'd said. He'd met with the protesters that morning, as we walked him back down to the station, a press release came out from his office with his opinions on things that were in there. So, you know, we were contacted by politicians from the Labour Party, the shadow politicians. I can't honestly remember what was in there. If there were conversations around what was going on, it was clearly unsustainable, it was clearly having a reputational damage to the city.
Okay, now, thank you very much. Now, you stopped being the cabinet member in May 2018. And I just want, if there's anything you want to tell us about the circumstances of your moving on from that role?
Yeah, it was, it had been a difficult period, there's no doubt about it. It was probably not something that any of us anticipated. I was aware that there'd been a number of colleagues that had been involved as cabinet members looking after this. I was also aware that it had been a difficult period in getting out there. And so, there was the, the local elections were on the Thursday, I think the count might have been overnight. The constitution of the Labour Group is we have an AGM following that. So we had the AGM on the Friday, the first Friday in May. And we elect a leader and a deputy leader and the office post. And then from that, the leader goes away with the officers and they look and to bring forward recommendations of the cabinet. I approached Julie at that point on the Friday evening, as the meeting finished, I approached and I said, look, if you want me to continue with this role, quite happy to, so you're not putting someone else in the firing line. I understand how difficult it is and prepare to carry on. I also understand if you want to bring in fresh face in there, that's fine. And I respect that view if that's what you want to do. And she was of the use, okay, and not exact words, but thank you, that's helpful because it helps us when we're looking and deciding on what we're going to do. It was then over the weekend, it was the bank holiday Monday. On the Tuesday morning, I got a phone call, I do remember because I was going to a funeral that morning, one of my ward colleagues, her father had died, it was a funeral that morning. And I got a phone call about half an hour or so before we were going to set off to say, look, I've made a decision and I'm replacing, replacing with someone else. You may be surprised when you hear who it is. But I wasn't made aware of who it was until I came into the Labour Group meeting that afternoon, about half past four, five o'clock.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. You started to talk about this next thing I wanted to ask you about, but I wonder if you could just tell us a bit more, and again, we're dealing with the benefit of hindsight here and that's the nature of these inquiries. But I just wonder what your view now is on the, essentially the impact the dispute had on the reputation of the council?
There's no disputing that it had an impact on the reputation of the council. I don't think anybody could say anything to the contrary of that. I think we were perhaps slow out of the blocks to start with in trying to address inaccuracies. We could have perhaps been better in getting the the full benefits explained and, you know, communicating that out there to people. We were on the back foot from the start. There had been, I had a number of, I had meetings with individuals in trying to see if there was a way forward around particular trees, around particular issues, around things like the Chelsea Oak that became known and there's a, sorry, the Chelsea
Chelsea Elm.
Elm, Vernon Oak.
Yes.
And I had conversations with people there. I had conversations with ward councillors for around the Vernon Oak and conversations with people there. I had conversations with individuals about different trees, about different issues and looking and saying, was there a way we could sort of talk about this? There was an arbor culturalist that contacted me and I met with him on two or three occasions. And he was trying to explain things in a slightly different way and, you know, and trying to get an understanding of things where we were with that. Clearly, you look at it with hindsight and think, yeah, we could have done things better. Was there a better way to engage with the protesters involved? Was there a better way to engage and get the the wider benefits? Was there a better way to engage with people who had experienced problems? The media, as I said at the start, I tried to be open and honest and go through. So, you know, if you talk to, such as Toby Foster down at Radio Sheffield, he would, you know, he regularly said, you were always open to coming on and I'd go on and I was happy to go on and take questions when the people are ringing and put questions to me and things like that. And I think it was all part of, I think we should have been looking at it differently perhaps from the start. I think part of the problem was that we were, the team that were trying to deal with the communication side or the PR side of things, were being bombarded with stuff. It was relentless and it was probably not something that we've experienced in any way, shape or form. And I think it's one of those things, it was almost firefighting from day one. So you're reacting to things that were coming in and not in a position to... We'd almost lost control of the media side of things and no matter what we tried to do, it didn't seem to be getting the message across. And credit to the STAG group, the tree campaigners, they were very, very good in their campaign and very effective in how they went about campaigning. And, you know, if that degree of passion is delivered on campaigning for a great many things, we'd see things a lot differently in the country. You know, look at national politics where campaigns take place, I don't think some of the campaigns have been as effective as the street tree campaign in Sheffield was. And credit to, you know, credit where it's due, credit to them on that one there.
Yeah. So you've emphasised in your description of that issue primarily the communications issues, but I wonder whether you think there were things that more substantively...
It's very difficult.
Should have been done differently, with the benefit of hindsight.
It's very difficult because in looking at measures that were taking place, and again, I'll point to the local elections, and if you look at the local elections and a third of the council is up each year, there's a fallow year and the votes that have been cast were still being cast and returning a majority Labour administration. So it tried to look and say, what was the impact across the whole city? It wasn't quite as, it wasn't the same impression that was coming from across the whole city. It was a very vocal campaign, well-organised campaign from a small sector, if you like, of the city, from a disproportionate percentage of the population that was coming through there. So it's, again, you know, with hindsight, you can look at it, you can see things differently, but if you're looking at measures at the time, you're saying, we're going out there as part of the manifesto commitment is that we will deliver this on the streets in your area and people were voting for Labour councillors and returning them and forty-two percent, the bigger share of the vote was going for Labour councillors. Admittedly, that's forty-two percent of those that voted, but that's across a range of candidates in there. It's, you know, using that as a measure, we live in a democracy where it's first past the post. There have been attempts to change that to a proportional representation or alternative vote, but that wasn't, that wasn't accepted by the population. And so that's the way we operate and on those sort of measures, when you look at those sort of measures coming through, you sort of gauge it and say, the wider city, the wider benefit that's out there is for the programme when we continue. And if you do look now and you see things, we don't get the, we don't get the level of complaints, we get issues now where people say to me, oh, I was travelling, I was coming off the motorway, coming into Sheffield, oh, the roads, and then, well, that's not in Sheffield, you hit the Sheffield boundary, you can see the difference. There are issues that have arisen from Amy delivering an almost patch and mend to get around some of the problems that arose out of this in some of these areas and have not dealt with the substantive problem that's in there. So there are still issues and there's still streets in the city where it's almost like a lunar landscape at places where you're going up and down and that's not being addressed for people with mobility issues and it's something we need to look at and see, is there a way to do that? It brought Amy back to the table to look at some of their engineering solutions and they incorporated different solutions in there at no additional cost to the council. But yeah, you know, it's, I don't think it's anything any of us would have envisaged and I don't think it's anything that any of us would hope we get something that wrong in the future.
Yeah, okay. Let me try to ask a sort of related question to give you a chance to sort of respond to what I'm really driving at here, which is if you were in the position now of having to approve a programme, suppose none of this had happened, you're in a position now of having to approve a programme, what things do you think might be different in terms of what you were trying to roll out? Imagine yourself back in twenty ten and you had a sense of this, what are the kinds of things you think would, it would have made sense to do differently?
I think, you know, more engagement with the public, earlier engagement with the public, a better, trying to get a better understanding of the concerns expressed by people and trying to allay those fears and, you know, a better explanation of what the longer-term benefits of the project would be to everybody. I said very early on in this, you will never make decisions that please everybody, but we are, we are there responsible for making decisions for the benefit of the whole city. And sometimes those decisions may not appear to some people to be the right decision, but on balance, you have to look at it, wait all up and say, what is the best decision for the city? We entered into a highways PFI project, it became a bone of contention for people because it is a PFI private finance initiative. It was the only game in town at the time, it was the only opportunity for us to get the investment, to bring the highways back up to a decent standard and to, you know, the whole infrastructure out there. We've dealt with, the street lighting is now all LED lighting and we're seeing the benefits there on the energy cost, the traffic lights and signage and signalling, they're all now, reaching the end of the programme to replace those, that they're now LEDs, saving on energy, better performing. We've done work on bridges and structures that have just been, you know, left for so long, they're now in a better state. We've dealt with the highways issues, we've dealt with street furniture. There are so many things that are out there. The highway trees is such a small amount, a small part of the overall programme and that's, that got lost, the benefits of the overall programme to the city got lost and I think that's a lesson that we can learn from there, that to look and say, well, it's almost, and I'm not saying this is the case, but it's almost that the bigger picture hid this smaller issue, if you like, this issue around trees that, I'm saying smaller in the bigger picture, but it was clearly a big issue for the people that lived in those areas and felt so strongly about the trees issue. So, you know, would you look at things differently? Yes, we'd look at things differently and perhaps look at, you know, what's the risk assessment of every element of a project now and rather look and saying, okay, the wider benefits are hiding something in there, we need to look and consider everything in there.
Okay, thank you. I wanted, this is my last topic I want to discuss with you, thank you. Just to ask you, how you see the risks of similar problems reemerging in future and is there anything that isn't happening at the moment which might need to be done to minimise that? As you know, that's one of the things I've said I'll listen to people's views on as part of my exercise here.
It's very difficult and it's that, I suppose it's managing expectations and perceptions of the wider public. If something happens in my locality, that's a huge, huge thing to me. But to other people, the other side of the city, don't see it in the same way. But it can develop into where there may be petitions, there may be letters, there may be questions asked that are going through. We shouldn't lose sight of the concerns of these people, but we do have to take it in the whole, the holistic approach of what's the right thing to do. You know, I look at things where we're in a position now with finances and we face very tough decisions and not everybody is going to agree with those decisions. But what we have to do, we are stewards of the council's finances, we are stewards of the council's implementation of services and we have to manage those, but we also have to manage the expectations of the public about if they feel very strongly and they can express concerns and opinions, yes, we will take those into consideration, yes, we will listen to those concerns, yes, we will try and understand where they're coming from. But that doesn't necessarily mean you can deliver on what they are asking. You have to take it on balance with everything else.
Yeah, I understand. So thank you. Is there anything you've not yet had a chance to say you'd like to tell us?
Right, another one. No, you know, I hope that coming out from this, there is a better understanding from everybody really on things that happened in there. I think there were a very difficult time, I think there were things that were said and done by people on all sides that with hindsight, I don't think they would consider they'd do it now. As a politician, you face the, you face the brickbats that are thrown at you and things like that. It's not, I don't see things as personal, you know, there were things that were said, there were things that have been done and I hope everybody can move on and I hope this inquiry comes up with the intended aims to sort of reconciliation and to have a look for future so we don't ever face a position like this again. And perhaps it'd be something that we share with other authorities up and down the country.
Right, okay. Thank you very much indeed. I think that concludes the discussion with you, so thank you.
Okay.
So Charles, we can end the recording then.